Hey, everyone. I just want to make sure you can hear me.
Stephanie, are you here?
All right, thank you.
Ready to broadcast, Steve.
Good, thanks, Jack. Evening, everyone. We'll bring the March twenty-second regular city council meeting to order. Is there a motion tonight on tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to drop tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Tom, could you take roll call?
Councilmember Harrington?
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel?
Hi.
Councilmember Beck?
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell?
Hi.
Mayor Voss?
Hi. And that motion passes. On to presentations, Noka County Sheriff's Office. Good evening, Shelley.
Good evening. I have a report for you for February two thousand and twenty-one custodial arrests and significant events. DWI, there were three DWI arrests in February. One arrest was the result of erratic driving conduct. The second arrest involved a vehicle which drove into a ditch and became stuck. The final arrest was the result of a suspect crashing his truck into a garage. The victim did not know the suspect and reported he was not moving after crashing into her garage. Upon arriving, the male was awoken by a deputy and asked the deputy to give him a ride home. The male failed field sobriety tests and was taken to jail where a test revealed a blood alcohol content of point one eight. Fraud. There have been several reports over the last year regarding people receiving notices regarding their application for unemployment benefits when they have not applied. If you receive notice from the Minnesota Unemployment Office about benefits and you did not apply, you should contact law enforcement to make a report and contact the Minnesota Unemployment Office to let them know of the suspected fraud. Terroristic threats. Deputy Lynch was contacted by a female victim who reported she had received texts from her son's father who had threatened to come to Minnesota and kill her fiance. The suspect was reportedly living with his mother in Missouri. Deputy Lynch contacted the residents in Missouri and spoke with the suspect's mother. He was advised the suspect was somewhere in Illinois. The mother reported her son had called her threatening and threatened to kill his ex-girlfriend fiancee and that he was on his way to a life sentence. He also made suicidal comments to his mother. The suspect then FaceTimed his brother and showed his brother a handgun and said he was on his way to Minnesota. The suspect's mother contacted the victim and let her know about the handgun and threats. Deputy Lynch conducted a ping on the suspect's cellphone and it registered to a location outside of Downers Grove, Illinois. Deputy Lynch had a description of the suspect's vehicle but no license plate number. Deputy Lynch had an alert put out for the suspect along with an officer's safety information and requested Downers Grove Police Department to check the location where the phone had pinged to. Deputy Lynch was later notified that the suspect had been located and a handgun had been seized from the suspect. The suspect had been placed on a mental health hold at a hospital. Approximately one week later, Deputy Lynch was notified that the suspect was on medications and would be getting released to return to Missouri. Deputy Lynch received a text from the female victim who reported she had been advised by the suspect's mother that he had overdosed on narcotics in Chicago. Deputy Lynch did verify this information with Chicago Police Department. The case is exceptionally cleared. Suspicious activity. Deputy Pizik was called to a business on a theft in progress. The suspect had left prior to Deputy Pizik's arrival. The caller advised that a male had a sazal and had been next to one of the business vehicles bending over as if to take the catalytic converter from the vehicle. The caller's husband had gone out to confront the male while the caller contacted nine-one-one. The business had a catalytic converter theft a few weeks prior, so they had installed security cameras. The caller's husband had told the male he needed a name and phone number before he was going to let him leave. The male supplied a false name and number. An attempt to locate was put out on the vehicle and a short time later, a state trooper did stop the vehicle. The male was properly identified and was determined to have a licensed status of canceled and nymical to public safety. The suspect stated he was at the business to inquire about buying some parts. There was a catalytic converter in the suspect vehicle which the suspect claimed he had found. There was not any damage to the business or the vehicles that the suspect had been found by, so the male was not able to face charges from that incident. However, was charged with the driving after cancellation and the catalytic converter was confiscated. Scam. Deputy Sorenson was dispatched on a suspicious phone call report. Upon arriving, the complainant was on the phone with the suspect who claimed to be with the DEA and that the complainant needed to go to Lowe's and purchase gift cards or the police would be called upon to arrest him. Deputy Sorenson took the phone at which time the suspect asked if the complainant was on his way to Lowe's. Deputy Sorenson asked the male for his name and the male gave a name stating he was calling from the DEA in Washington, DC. The suspect then said he was going to send the police to arrest him. Deputy Sorenson advised he is the police, at which time the caller hung up. The complainant had not given any personal information to the suspect. Fraud. Deputy Wold was contacted to report a theft of two thousand dollars. Upon contacting the victim, Deputy Wold was advised the female was texting and emailing with a person regarding renting a home on apartments dot com. The home was to be rented for two thousand dollars a month. The victim agreed to pay the suspect through Zelle and sent two payments, one of twelve hundred and one of eight hundred to the mail. After sending the payment, she was no longer receiving any texts or emails. The victim was eventually able to locate a realtor who was selling the house and upon contacting them, she was advised to call nine-one-one as she had just been scammed out of two thousand dollars. The email and text number were forwarded for investigation. That is my report for February. As you can see, the fraud and scam artists are busy at work. One of the other scams that's going around right now is people trying to prey on people who are trying to get the COVID vaccine. They're offering, if you pay us, we're going to get you in the front of the line and that kind of thing. And unfortunately, of course, people are falling for it, so. Just so you know, there's no way to get you to the front of the line by you paying some third party to get the COVID vaccine, so just be really careful. And if you ever have doubts about phone calls or things like that, we request you call us because we can help you clear up what is true and what is not.
Okay, great. Thanks, Shelley. Any questions from council tonight?
Well, Shelley, you want to know about these scams? Because I've been called three times in probably the last eight days on social security, so I just hang up on them. But do you guys want to know about it?
Yeah, if you want to make a report so we kind of know what's going on, it's, you know, it's good for us to know that people are getting them. I know we get a lot of them. But that way we can kind of track that. Yep, those scam calls are still going on and our office sends out that Friday update where it gives kind of a crime alert so they can, you know, make a note that there's been so many calls or that kind of thing with those social security scams or the unemployment benefits, that kind of thing. So you can just phone report. You don't have to, you know, meet up with the deputy and all that if you don't want.
Well, you know, what's kind of weird is they're like seven-six-three numbers. I was looking for something out of state, but they're all like local numbers.
It's so easy to spoof whatever. You can make your number appear that it's coming from the sheriff's office if you want to call people and tell them, you know, you have a warrant out for your arrest and they'll look at their caller ID and it's going to show Anoka County Sheriff's Office, so then, you know, people are more apt to unfortunately fall victim. We typically don't call people to let them know they have a warrant out for their arrest. We do send letters if they do have outstanding warrants or, you know, deputies will be stopping by the house, that kind of thing, but we will never call and ask for you to get us gift cards or anything of that nature.
Thank you, Shelley.
I have a question, Shelley. For somebody to call, they wouldn't call nine-one-one. What's a good number for them to call?
Actually, they can call nine-one-one. Nine-one-one actually prefers that you do call that number, and the reason why is when you call that number, your address automatically populates on their screens. So if you call, we do have a non-emergency number, but typically when you call nine-one-one, they will ask you, if they're busy, they will say, is this an emergency? And you can tell them yes or no. And then if it's not an emergency, they'll put you on hold until they can get to you. We do have a non-emergency number, that's seven-six-three-four-two-seven-one-two-one-two. However, your address and information won't automatically populate on that using the non-emergency number. So that's kind of why they request that you actually call nine-one-one.
Hey, any other questions for Shelley tonight? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks to you, too.
Now, Mark Asher, our fire department report. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, mayor and council, and welcome to spring. And with spring brings a lot of people who are doing their yard cleanup. And when they start doing the yard cleanup, a lot of people tend to burn things that they shouldn't be burning. So just a warning that we're not allowed to burn grass clippings or any yard cleanups items. If you're going to do a recreational fire, remember three feet wide, three feet high. And one other thing, mayor, if I may, we cannot be burning in burn barrels. Burn barrels are not allowed. And this afternoon was a great example of a burn barrel gentleman was using and it got totally out of control. And we ended up having helicopters and airplanes helping us put out a fire. So with that said, I'll talk a little bit about February, our February calls. And as you can see by my report, February actually slowed down a little bit from January and December. We had fifty-six total calls in February. Thirty-five of those were medicals. Eight of them were vehicle crashes. Four alarms, two calls for burning and or smoke in the area, and just the other three just made up a minor other calls. Year-to-date, as of right now, we've answered one hundred and seventy-one calls, year-to-date. And that's about nineteen ahead of last year. It has slowed down and at this time last year it did slow down also. I've also included a couple graphs so you can kind of see how we're going, and I'll continue these in my reports. One of them is the monthly graph showing total calls and how they're compared to each other. And then also continue the year-to-date graph and the council will be able to see now where we are the most busiest. Any questions, mayor?
Mark. Yep, yep. Mark, I noticed that there is four calls to sixty-five and thirty-seventh. Are those just isolated incidences that you just happen to get four calls this month or is there a pattern or something that the city should be aware of?
Three of those calls happened within ten minutes of each other on a snowy slippery day. So two-hundred-and-thirty-seventh and there were a number of calls just right in that area. So the weather had, is a factor, I guess is what I'm trying to say on those. Same thing on two-hundred-and-twenty-first and also. So, you know, I don't know what it is, and the deputies have mentioned it also, from like two-hundred-and-thirty-seventh south to about past two-hundred-and-twenty-first. For some reason, that is one of the slippiest, slipperiest areas of Highway sixty-five in the wintertime. We don't know why. It just happens. It seems like it is.
Okay, any other questions for chief?
So, Mark, can people be ticketed for this, you know, when they're doing illegal burns like that?
Yes, they can. And if I'm not mistaken, the ticket is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. We collaborate, that's not really a good word, but we work with the sheriff's deputies as far as writing the tickets. Deputies will write the tickets if we ask them. And of course, if the deputies believe that it's you know, worth the offense. So, yes, you can. But I can tell you, the fire department, we're not in the business to hand out tickets and find people. We don't want to do that. I would guess that a hundred percent of the time, which means I'm not really guessing, I guess. But we don't, if we go to somebody's house who might be legal, you know, doing illegal burn and they don't really realize it and they're workable, you know, we just serve that as a warning. And most of our residents are really great to work with. You know, our firefighters and office fire officers will explain what can be burned and what can't be burned and what time you can burn and you can't burn. And if something needs to put out, the fire needs to be put out, we always give the homeowner, the resident, the opportunity to put it out themselves so that we don't have to bring a truck out and do that. Our residents, once they understand, are really good to work with. But occasionally, we might have somebody who will burn two, three times and have maybe a long history. And that's where the tags usually get issued.
See, I'd just like to make a comment on that fire today. Tell that guy in that airplane, he better get it up a little bit higher. He was pretty low when he was dropping.
Yeah, that was, yeah, right. Well, I wasn't far from that airplane, so I retreated myself, but you know, and like I said, that was a great example. That fire was in Lynwood. We were helping out Lynwood with that. And that's a result of somebody burning in a burn barrel, homemade burn barrel. And the fire got loose and just about burned his house down and, you know, put his neighbor's house across the wetland in Perrons. And because of that, that's, you know, the helicopter came from Brainerd and the airplane came from Princeton, so.
Hey, anything else for chief tonight? All right, thanks, Mark.
Thank you all.
Thanks, chief.
Good evening.
Good night.
Onto our consent agenda. Is there a motion tonight?
I'll make a motion to drop tonight's content agenda. I'd like to pull item E myself.
Oh, second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
I'd like to pull item A and D and, well, E too, but A and D in addition to E.
Hey, anything else? Any other discussion? Tom, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel?
Hi.
Councilmember Beck?
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell?
Hi.
And Mayor Voss?
Hi. Motion passes. Suzanne, item A.
Item A is a bill's list, and I guess I'm not going to call out departments or anything like that, but I'm just wondering on the there's a two-hundred-and-sixteen-dollar travel, that, is that what it's called, travel expenses? I'm just wondering with COVID going on and everything, who is traveling for two-hundred-and-sixteen dollars right now where nobody's meeting in person, everybody's zooming? Can that be explained to me, please?
Suzanne, I'll be glad to explain that. That's for my travel expenses on things that I have to go out and check. Most of those are local. I'm generally out just about every day checking on complaints, reviewing matters, and that's the mileage that I turn in to be reimbursed for my travel cost within the city.
Okay, all right. Thank you. It just seems like it's a lot of miles for, it's for one month, right?
That's for two months.
Oh, well, that makes it a little bit better. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Suzanne, you're mute.
I didn't, I accidentally clicked mute. I'd like to make a motion to approve item A on the consent agenda.
Second. Motion made in second. Discussion? Hearing none. Tom, can you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel?
Hi.
Councilmember Beck?
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell?
Hi.
And Mayor Voss?
Hi. And that motion passes. Suzanne, item D.
Item D is the attorney contract extension. I am wondering if the city went out and got any other quotes from other law firms and if this is a good deal? Because it just seems a little high to me.
Suzanne, we did not go out for other quotes. We've had outstanding service from Eckberg-Lammers, both on the civil and the prosecutorial side. They have a great historical and institutional knowledge of cases, activities and actions going on in the city that saves, in my opinion, a lot of research time on matters. They're also highly responsive to all of our calls, emails and requests. Generally, it's followed up not on the same day, but within the same half-day. Council does have the option of doing an RFP for services, but I don't think that we will find anything that will match what we're getting from Eckberg-Lammers. Their costs are competitive with other legal firms. And in staff's opinion, we would be best to extend their contract and that's our recommendation.
Okay, my other question is, why is it for, it's for five years? Why not two years?
Generally, for professional services, it's for a longer period of time so that you don't have to do this every two years. And it also gives that firm an assurance that they'll be here, so they'll have staffed. In this case, it doesn't usually matter, but all of our contracts we've issued for professional services for engineering legal have been on five-year terms.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll make a motion to approve item D on the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion? Hearing none. Tom, can you vote or take the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel?
Hi.
Councilmember Beck?
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell?
Hi.
Mayor Voss?
Hi. And that motion passes. Tim, item E.
I just want to thank Miranda Hussick for her time at the East Bethel Fire Department. She spent two years. And I just want to say good luck on your new employment opportunities down in New Mexico. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve item E in the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion?
I too would like to congratulate Miranda on her service and thank her, and hopefully she's getting a certificate or something for her service.
Okay. With that, Tom, can you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Hi.
Councilmember Urkel?
Hi.
Councilmember Beck?
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell?
Hi.
Mayor Voss?
Hi. And that motion passes. There's no new business tonight, so on to the department reports, community development. And I see Stephanie's with us tonight. Good evening, Stephanie.
Hi. So, as this has to do with a resolution releasing three development agreements for Classic Commercial Park, Classic Commercial Second Edition and Classic Commercial Third Edition. So as part of the title commitment search to the potential buyer of Lot One, Block One, Classic Commercial Park Fourth Edition, it was found that there were three development agreements in which the developers' obligations have been met. Therefore, their legal team is asking the obligations of the developer agreements be released. They do have a closing on the property scheduled for Wednesday, so they wanted to have this taken care of prior to closing. The city engineer, city attorney and I did complete the research needed to verify that the obligations have been met. At this time, the city engineer and the city attorney concur that the obligations of the developer again have been met. Therefore, the release of the agreements are warranted. The potential buyer's attorney also reviewed and he agrees with the resolution as well, so he's in support of the resolution that the city attorney completed, and that's the resolution attached to your packet. So at this time, staff recommends city council to consider adoption of Resolution twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one dash fifteen releasing the developer's obligations of the developer's agreement at the other side of the resolution.
Is there a motion on this resolution tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash fifteen, Resolution releasing three development agreements for Classic Commercial Park, Classic Commercial Second Edition and Classic Commercial Third Edition, releasing the developers' obligations of the developers' agreements identified within the resolution.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion?
I would like to make a comment on this. When I was reading it, I had to call Jack because I found it very difficult to understand. And he explained it in a paragraph and it made perfect sense. So I'm just wondering if, when we get something that has all these legalistic terms, if there could be something that clarifies it in more of layman terms. I don't know if that's possible, but I'm asking.
Oh, Jack or Stephanie? You have a comment to that? I think we lost Stephanie.
I'll comment. On some of these things, it's it's difficult to put them in certain terms. Again, if anyone has any questions or doesn't understand anything, please call either myself or Stephanie or someone connected with the report and we'll do our best to try to explain it. We do try to eliminate jargon and acronyms and everything like that as much as possible because we understand that if you're not familiar with them and don't use them on a daily basis, they can become somewhat confusing. But again, if you see anything in any staff report, give us a call. We'll be glad to explain it. And we'll always try to write those in understandable words.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. Tom, can you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
All right.
Councilmember Urkel?
Hi.
Councilmember Beck?
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell?
Hi.
And Mayor Voss?
Hi. And that motion passes. Item C, or I'm sorry, item B one is Baton Street Trail Beds.
Thank you, Steve. This item is an agenda item for Resolution twenty-twenty-one sixteen, accepting quotes for the Baton Street Trail Construction Phase Two project and wetland replacement purchase agreements. City council approved the plans and specifications and authorized solicitation of quotes for this project at the February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one council meeting. Quotes were received and tabulated on March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. The project consists of completing the Baton Street Trail construction from its current location, five hundred feet north of two-hundred-and-twenty-sixth Lane to two-hundred-and-twenty-sixth Lane. Project location map is attached in your packet. The estimated construction cost of the project was seventy-three thousand dollars. A total of four quotes were received and the quotes are in your packet with the low quote being from Dirt Works Inc. in the amount of sixty-five thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and seventeen in the amount of sixty-five thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and seventeen cents. This project will fill point zero five four acres of wetland. The city will need to purchase point zero, point, point one oh eight acres of wetland bank credits. Staff has solicited wetland replacement credit quotes from qualified wetland banks. A total of two banks responded to the request. The quotes included a cost per square foot of two dollars and twenty-five cents and two dollars and fifty cents. Purchase agreement from the Rockin D Corporation, which includes a quote for wetland, wetland replacement credits at two dollars and twenty-five cents per square foot, is attached for council consideration. The total quote was to replace the wetlands' fill is ten thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and one cent, as summarized on the attached purchase agreement. This project will be financed by the Park Capital Fund, and parks or funds are available and appropriate for this project. Staff is recommending approval of Resolution Twenty Twenty One Dash Sixteen, Accepting Quotes for the Baton Trail Treat Project and Award of Contract to Dirt Works, Inc. and the purchase agreement with Rockin D Corporation, which includes the replacement of point one oh eight acres of wetland for a total cost of ten thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and one cent.
Is there a motion on this resolution tonight?
I'll make a motion for approval of Resolution Twenty Twenty One Dash Sixteen, Accepting Quotes for the Baton Street Trail Project and Award of Contract to Dirt Works Incorporated and the purchase agreement with Rock and D Corporation, which includes the replacement of point one zero eight acres of wetland for a total cost of ten thousand, eight thirty-four and one cent.
Second.
Motion made, second discussion.
I have a question. My question is, I, I appreciate always going with the lowest bid, but has their previous works been analyzed and made sure they're not, you know, like do poor quality and stuff like that for both of these companies? Or are we, do we just automatically take the lowest bid?
No, we always analyze the company that submits it and make sure that they're quality contractors. In this case, Dirt Works is one of exceptional quality. They're the one that did the Prairie Pines subdivision off two hundred and forty-fifth. And the one off Baton Street, we've had excellent working relationships with the contractor. He's been very good to work with, and in many cases, he's done a few little extra things for us at no additional cost. So we highly recommend the contractor for his quality of work, along with his low bid.
Any other?
Okay, and?
Go ahead, Suzanne, I'm sorry.
One, one more little question, because I don't really understand what the wetland replacement credits are about. Could you go into a little detail and explain how that works?
Suzanne, because we have to fill and be in wetlands, in this case, it's point oh five four acres. When you do that, you have to buy wetlands credits, which shows that you're either replacing these elsewhere or you're purchasing the credits where they have been replaced. And it has to be twice the amount of land you disturb. It's a requirement of Bowser, so these are things that have to be done anytime we get into wetlands.
Alrighty, thank you. That makes all the perfect sense now.
Hey, any other discussion? Hearing none. Tom, could you take a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
All right.
Councilmember Urkel.
Hi.
Councilmember Beck.
Hi.
Councilmember Mundel.
Hi.
Mayor Voss.
Hi, and that motion passes. On to Whispering Aspen, final plat.
I will be abstaining from discussion and any voting on this agenda item.
Thanks, Brian.
On November the ninth, two thousand twenty, city council unanimously approved the preliminary plat for Whispering Aspen Second Edition, with the conditions that city staff must be satisfactory to the address and a financial guarantee in the amount determined by the city engineer shall be established for street utility and grading work prior to the release of the final plat recorded with Anoka County. Once this plat is approved by city council or by statutory requirements of four six two point three five eight subdivision three B, the developer will submit the amount of the financial guarantee. Once staff receives the funds, the final plat, my law, will be released for filing with Anoka County. On February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, Planning Commission discussed the final plat for Whispering Aspen Second Edition and recommended approval by six one vote. The final plat was presented to city council on March eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Staff certified that all the conditions of the planning requirements were satisfied. After a lengthy discussion, the motion to approve the plat resulted in a tie vote, and the motion failed. Councilperson Mundel recused himself from the vote and discussion, as he is an employee of the applicant for the plat. Regarding the outcome of the council vote on this matter and in the opinion of the city attorney, Minnesota statutes require the city approve the final plat if all conditions have been fulfilled. The city attorney has stated the following as to this particular situation. Minnesota Statute Section Four Six Two Point Three Five Eight Subdivision Three B places a mandatory obligation on the city to approve the final plat if the preliminary plat and conditions are met within sixty days of the request for the final approval. Following the preliminary approval, the applicant may request final approval by the municipality. And upon such request, the municipality shall certify a final approval within sixty days if the applicant has complied with all the conditions and requirements of the applicable regulations and all conditions and requirements upon which the preliminary approval is expressly conditioned, either through performance or execution of appropriate agreements assuring performance. If the municipality fails to certify the final approval or so required, and if the applicant has complied with all conditions and requirements, the application shall be deemed finally approved, and upon the demand, the municipality shall execute a certificate to that effect. Following sixty days of the request for the final approval, the city is required to execute the final plat if the city receives a demand to execute. According to the Court of Appeals, statute places primary emphasis on the preliminary plat approval once the conditions and requirements therein are satisfied, and the plat mechanically receives final approval. In the case of Similar Construction, Inc. versus the City of Hannover is an example of the requirement of this statute. The only exception to this would be the council adopting specific findings stating how the final plat failed to meet the conditions and requirements of the preliminary plat. Staff has determined that the applicant has met the requirements and conditions of the preliminary plat. On March eighth, two thousand twenty-one, the council did not determine the developer failed to meet the requirements and conditions of the preliminary plat, nor did the council adopt any findings to that effect. City ordinance requires written findings to be adopted when the final plat is denied. If city council denies the final plat, it must state in writing reasons for that denial at the time it denies the request. There were three conditions placed on the preliminary plat. One, the city engineer's approval of the developer's compliance with staff comment letters. The developer's provision of a financial guarantee prior to the release of the final plat and fire department approval. According to staff, the developer satisfied items one and three at the time, and the developer will satisfy the remaining condition at the time the final plat is released. If the developer demands the city execute the final plat without approval of council, and the developer provides the financial guarantees at that time, there is no basis for withholding the final plat under statute. City attorney advises that the mayor and city administrator should issue the final plat in compliance with requirements of Minnesota Statute Forty Six Point Three Five Eight Subdivision Three if the plat is not approved. As stated in the city attorney's opinion, there was no basis for not approving the plat, and the sixty-day rule requires the city to approve the plat. Sixty-day rule will come in effect tomorrow. As approval is required due to no presentation or adoption of specific findings as to how the final plat failed to meet the conditions and requirements of the preliminary plat, there are three options to consider to address this issue. The council may consider a motion to rescind the vote of the final plat made at the city council meeting on March eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Any participating council member can move to rescind the vote on the final plat. Upon the rescission of the vote, the council may then vote to approve the file. This alternative will put the record in order and result in no additional legal cost for this matter. If the council takes no action, the mayor and city administrator may approve the final plat upon the demand of the developer and provision of financial guarantee pursuant to the statutory mandates of Minnesota Statute Section Four Six Two Point Three Five Eight Subdivision Three. There may be additional legal cost if this is the process to determine approval of the final plat should further consultation with the city attorney be required. If the developer demands the city execute the final plat and offers the provision of financial guarantees at that time, there is no basis for withholding the plat under the statute. The city does not issue the final plat. Under these conditions, the developer may file suit against the city, asking the court to order the city to release the plat. There will be additional cost if this is the process to determine approval and release of the final plat. Legal costs to address the tie vote for the final plat for Whispering Aspen, Aspen Second Edition have resulted in approximately a thousand dollars to date. Should the council fail to rescind the vote of March eighth, two thousand twenty-one and approve this plat at the March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one meeting, the city may incur additional legal expenses if forced to reply to a lawsuit by the developer or additional legal services that may be required for any activities related to continuance of this matter. Staff has two recommendations on the matter. Recommendation one is, as there were no presentations or adoptions of specific findings as to how the final plat failed to meet the conditions and requirements of the preliminary plat at the March eighth, two thousand twenty-one council meeting. And the sixty-day rule requires city approval. Staff recommends city council rescind the vote for the final plat, Whispering Aspen Second Edition.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion for rescinding the vote for the final plat for Whispering Aspen Second Edition.
Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second? And that motion fails for lack of a second. It's next, Jack.
Thank you. As this motion failed, recommendation two is moot. Abs, I'll add one more thing, though. Absent the consideration recommended by the staff recommendations that we just voted on, the applicant may request approval by the city or seek a court order requiring the city to release the plat. The applicant's legal rights under statute regarding this matter come as close to guarantee as possible that the final plat will be approved.
So we're done on this item on this one then tonight?
Excuse me, Steve?
What, what's next on this item then tonight?
There, there would be nothing else on this. The applicant now may come in after tomorrow and request that the plat be approved because of the expiration of the sixty-day rule. And by statute, then we are required to approve that and certify the plat and sign it for recording.
And, and that's by court order?
That's by statute.
So then who, who signs it?
The, yourself and myself would sign the plat. You as the mayor and myself as the city clerk.
Well, i- if, if council didn't give me direction or authority to sign a plat, I'm not inclined to go against council wishes on this.
As, as far as that, I'll let Mr. Loonan elaborate more on the legalities of it.
Certainly. Mayor, that is, that is your right, if that's how you feel. We have looked at this issue. City Attorney Nelson has looked at it. I've discussed it with him in anticipation of this meeting. It is our interpretation of the statute that actual approval, a vote approving by the council is not necessary to certify the final plat as the, the statute, Section Four Six Two Point Three Five Eight Subdivision Three B in relevant parts states that if the municipality fails to certify final approval, which, which has now occurred and without a rescission will, will maintain, the applicant, and, and if the applicant has complied with all of the conditions and requirements of the preliminary plat, which staff has found is in full compliance, then the applicant is deemed finally approved, and upon demand, the municipality shall execute a certificate to that effect. The, the, the use of shall is not a discretionary term. It's, it's a requirement. And so the statute would require approval. Now, if, if it is your, your opinion, and we can certainly, you know, discuss from a legal matter, this is, this is council's opinion that you would be required to certify because the plat has not been, has not been voted down. It just has not been certified, and statute requires it now to be certified to effect of the final approval. If you should choose not to sign up on that, then there's, there's a potential that, that the city would end up in litigation, which again, a- as Attorney Nelson has, has put in this report and, and as your city attorney states, it's, it's a strong case in favor of the developer that will cost the city additional legal costs going forward. And so even though council has not voted or directed approval on this, the statute requires the city to certify that final plat.
So it, it seems like it's, there's contradiction here with, with what you just said and with what's our staff report. Our staff reports state that the mayor and the city administrator may approve the filed plat. I mean, that, that, that's, that's a decision, not a, not a shall.
The, the statute uses the word shall. If you, if you choose, and, and certainly you, you know, you may choose, it is, it is our opinion that the city is required to do it. But if, if you and the administrator, and, and certainly we can have further consultation regarding the, the legal requirements, but if you and the administrator make a determination that you're not going to sign it because there was not a vote approving it, then we, nothing is going to force you to sign it. That doesn't get approved until you sign up on that document. And so you're right, there's, there's a bit of discretion in the staff report because we can't force you or the city administrator to, to do any action because we are not in court. Our recommendation in reviewing the statute is that approval is mandatory, and whether or not that approval comes from a vote of the city council, whether or not that approval comes from the, the strict language of the statute, which requires you to approve it, whether or not it was finally certified officially by vote, it's going to go forward. And if, if neither of those two go forward, then, then it likely ends up in court, and, and we have to go through that process where it's, it's our opinion in, in taking a look at this, that the, the statutory language is fairly strong regarding the obligation to certify.
Okay. So you're done?
None, none of that, none of that comes into effect yet. The, this, the, the sixty-day rule has not run. It's upon the expiration of sixty days, which is the deadline within which council takes action. The action that council can take are they can either A, approve it, approve the final plat, or B, they can deny the final plat, and, and the requirement in denying the final plat is to make findings that the preliminary conditions were not met. Or they can take no action. The statute contemplates that, that no action will be taken because it talks about the municipality's failure to certify final approval. And by not taking a vote and, and certifying final approval, the, the council has in effect failed to certify the final approval, and therefore that sixty-day rule goes into effect. And at the expiration of that sixty-day rule, if the developer were to make a demand on the council, it would be our recommendation of city attorney that, that the mayor and the city administrator sign that. If that's not an action that, that either of you are comfortable taking, then again, we're not going to force it, and potentially this, this ends up in litigation.
Yeah.
Then it'd be more legal cost, right, Tom?
Yes, yeah, undoubtedly.
Okay.
All right, is there any other discussion on this?
I have a question. If it goes to court, do would those of us who have a problem with some of the documentation and, and our issues, can we go and explain ourselves, or does it just go with the attorney and the defendant?
I, I'll just speak generally, and if, if we were going to talk anymore- I I'll just speak generally, and if if we were going to talk anymore in depth regarding the the litigation, I would I would advise us to wait potentially. Um, and and do that in a closed session if if a lawsuit actually would be commenced. Um, but just speaking generally, because of the 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 way that this action would be brought. It wouldn't be um, it wouldn't be an instance, Councilmember Urkel, where there would be witnesses going in and talking about their issues. The the time for the city, um, the time for the planning commission, the time for those issues to be brought up is during the approval of the preliminary plat. And when the conditions are placed on that approval, um, as part of the final plat. Uh, the 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 preliminary plat was approved, is my understanding. There were three conditions that were placed on it. And as it's put forth here, those have been satisfied. So, you know, if if someone wants to challenge whether or not one of those conditions was satisfied. That may be where the issue lies. But if there's just concerns about the plat as it was approved in the preliminary phases, that's not really going to be a relevant issue for any sort of lawsuit.
Any any other discussion? All right, we'll move on to the next item. Anything you want?
Twenty twenty one JPA street maintenance project bid. Following projects were approved to be bid as part of the twenty twenty one JPA street maintenance program of city council on January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. These projects have been identified in the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty five street capital improvement plan and include. Ship ceiling of Northland Manor and Serenity Ponds developments. Twenty thousand linear feet of pavement markings and a hundred thousand linear feet of cracked ceiling at streets as indicated on the map attached in your packet. The planned budget for the seal coating, crack ceiling, and striping of the above listed projects was two thou- two hundred thousand dollars. These projects will be funded from the street capital fund as identified in the twenty twenty one twenty five capital improvement plan. On Friday, March the twelfth, the city of Coon Rapids, the administrator of this project for all the cities. Received and opened bids for the North Metro Street Maintenance Project. And the bids were as follows and outlined in your packet and totaled one hundred and thirty eight thousand nineteen dollars. For the city of East Bethel share of the units of the items that they bid. The bid results are are consistent with past costs and this project is budgeted in the twenty twenty one street capital fund. This contract can be amended regarding the inclusion of additional line item bid quantities. As these bids are significantly below the project estimate, staff will examine potential twenty twenty two maintenance fees. To determine the possibility of contracting directly with the low bidder for additional work under this agreement or apply this balance to pavement overlay projects. Staff has reviewed the bids and recommends acceptance of the twenty twenty one JPA street maintenance agreement bids in the amount of one hundred and thirty eight thousand. Nineteen dollars in authorization authorization to submit a letter of concurrence to the city of Coon Rapids indicating our participation in this project.
I'll make a motion for acceptance of the twenty twenty one JPA street maintenance agreement bids in the amount of one hundred and thirty eight thousand and nineteen dollars. An authorization to submit a letter of concurrence to the city of Coon Rapids indicating our participation in this project.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Tom, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel?
Aye.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell?
Aye.
And Mayor Voss?
Aye, and that motion passes. City Minister here.
Item seven G one, city personnel committee. At the February first and March first, two thousand twenty one, city council work meetings. Council discussed needs for additional human resource assistance to proactively deal with and avoid potential personnel issues. After consideration of various options, it is proposed that the city establish the personnel committee as a first step to provide oversight regarding this matter. This committee would review matters relating to policies and practices, compensation benefits. Labor relations and collective bargaining, employee relations, staffing and organizational structure, and advise the council on these issues. Ordinance twenty twenty one dash O two amends chapter two, article four. Of the East Bethel City Code by adding division seven for the establishment of a personnel committee. This new division will address the establishment duties and bylaws of a proposed committee. City council is requested to consider the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty one dash O two. Which amends chapter two, article four of the East Bethel City Code by adding division seven, sections two forty one through two forty three. To create a personnel committee.
Is there a motion as resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty one dash O two, which amends chapter two, article four of the East Bethel City Code by adding division. Seven, sections two dash two forty one through two dash two forty three to create a personnel committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion?
Suzanne? I'd like to make some comments on this. Um, this sounds like it's permanent, and I thought this was just going to be something that's temporary, and I think it should be temporary.
Well, I think, go ahead, Jack.
To to your to your point, Suzanne, uh, really, it's it's an ongoing issue. These things always consistently come up. Particularly to review of personnel policies, union negotiations. So we would have to recreate this every second or third year to address these issues. I think there's a lot of value in is having as a standing permanent committee. So that these issues can be brought to those council members for review. Uh, guidance and assistance and recommendations and how we want to proceed with them. And then so they can advise council of their discussions with staff regarding these matters.
So my other question is, um. The uh, the, there's going to be the city council people, the mayor and the city council person and yourself and staff. Will there be additional financial compensation for any staff that are on this or is this just going to be an additional duty as assigned?
It's an additional duty as a sign. There is no extra compensation.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Tom, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel?
Aye.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell?
Aye.
Mayor Voss?
Aye, and that motion passes. The Sunrise River and Upper Rum River WMOs.
We we got one other item before that one, Steve.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Item seven G two, ci- city finance committee. Discussions at the March first, two thousand twenty one, city council work meeting resulted in a proposal. To amend chapter two, article four, division six, city finance committee. To mirror the framework of the consideration of an ordinance to establish a personnel committee. This amendment creates language as to establish duties and bylaws and creates consistency within the creation of city committees. City council is requested to consider adoption of ordinance twenty twenty one dash O three. Which amends chapter two, article four, division six. Of the East Bethel City Code by amending sections two dash two oh seven and two dash two oh eight. And adding sections two dash two oh nine regarding the establishment and duties of the finance committee.
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Shirley seconds. Discussion?
So I have a comment or a question. I did not see an um, or do I recall discussing a finance committee? Um, so where did this come from? Because I'm absolutely confused that where this, this just seems like it came out of thin air.
This came from our March first work meeting discussion while we were discussing the formation for the framework for the. Personnel committee was pointed out by our city attorney staff, Miss Lita Bannick. That the finance committee's uh, framework should be structured along the same lines. So we have consistency with these committees and also with the creation of any future committees, which. Addresses the needs to uh, essentially establish bylaws and set a framework up for their creation. So. We did discuss this at the March first meeting and the recommendation was was to change the finance committee ordinance to mirror that of the personnel committee.
And Jack, if I may just, yeah, you're not creating a new committee. You're just updating the language in the ordinance to to bring it uniform with the one, the one that you are creating.
That's correct.
Thank you. That's where I was confused. Thanks.
Is there any other discussion? Tom, could you take roll call vote?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel?
Aye.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell?
Aye.
Mayor Voss?
Aye, and that motion passes. Now onto the Sunrise River and Upper Rum River WMOs.
Thank you, Steve. Attached in your packet is a twenty twenty mini report from the Upper Rum River and Sunrise River watershed management organizations. Both organizations have requested that their reports be distributed and presented to city council as an annual update on the accomplishment of both WMOs. Both the Sunrise River and Upper Rum River WMOs welcome any comments from city council. With us tonight is Leon Magr. He is a our citizen member of the. Sunrise River WMO, and I'll let him do the honors of discussing the handout that's in our packet for the Sunrise River. Leon, thank you for attending tonight and uh, agreeing to give us uh, an update on the projects of the Sunrise River WMO.
Okay, I don't have a. Is my mic working? Yeah.
Yes.
Do you hear me? Okay, I don't.
Yep, we hear you.
I don't have a, I don't have a lot to say. But if you uh, if you go through the twenty twenty highlights, I, that was in your packet there. The last bullet, uh, which is the Lake Shore. Uh, Stewartship video. That video is was not included in your packet. But if you go to the Sunrise website and click on videos, the videos tab. That Stewartship, Lake Shore Stewartship movie is in two parts. And I really encourage you to go and look at that and watch the video. It's very short and it's very informative and it's done very well. I'm I'm partial to that, but uh, I think that that's worthwhile. You're you're seeing it. That'll give you a good idea of what's all involved by the Lake Shore Stewartship programs. On the other side of that uh, same page, the top of the column, it. Talks about uh. Public officials tour, which I wanted to uh, break, talk about a little bit. We did a public officials tour a few years ago. And then last year, uh, we were thinking about doing it again because a lot of the uh, the of our four member communities, there are quite a few new council persons. And even for some of you old timers, it still might be worthwhile to see some of the projects that are going on. And uh, this is going to be a scaled down version if we do it this year. Hopefully that 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 be okay, you know, with this COVID stuff. And uh, so there isn't going to be a bus. There'll be a a car tour. But uh, anyway, I'd like you all to consider, to consider that tour. The other thing I would like to talk about, and that is just very briefly, then I'm going to let you guys tell me if you got any questions. But uh, and that is is that you do have an opportunity to learn what we do and and what we're all about by going through our website. And you can cruise through that and you can look at the minutes and the the videos and the different things that we've done and our plans. But I'd also like you, encourage you to uh, attend one of our meetings. Our meetings are open to the public. Our next meeting is April, April one, which is a Thursday. And if any of you are interested in attending the meetings through through Zoom, I would like you to either contact me or you could contact him. And then the week prior to the meeting. Will make sure that you get the agenda for the meeting, you get the packet for the meeting, and you will also get the uh, the link for the meeting. Uh, so I'd like you to consider joining us. Uh, if that, I would like to see if there's any questions or anything. I think the uh, the uh, three page or two page, whatever it was, I just lost it over here. Uh, it's pretty self explanatory. Hello. Anybody, any questions?
Any questions for Leon tonight?
I don't have any questions, but I did want to thank you, Leon, for all that you do for the city with supporting these. Uh, three or four years ago, I did go on the public officials tour and looked at the projects that was finished up and it was uh. Uh, surprising how much you'd learn on just simple outdoor stuff. So just want to say thanks, Leon.
So thank, thank you, Brian. And uh, I know you and I know Suzanne also attended one of our meetings. Uh, the one she attended, uh, we had a speaker in from the Carp Solutions, which is working on our carp program. Which is over on Martin Lake and Tyco. And uh, it's unfortunate you didn't get to see a regular business meeting where we covered more different subjects than when you were there, but I was glad that you did show up and attended. Becky, you're certainly welcome.
I'd just like to make a comment, comment too, Leon, that uh, I've learned a lot from you since I've been on there. Um. You you know a lot about these lakes and uh, I don't know if you'll agree with me, but the last couple of years, the sunrise has done a lot of work. Done a lot of carp out of some lakes and they started doing some monitoring in some of these other lakes, like Rice Lake behind me. They want to do something Boot Lake. So, you know, there's a lot of water in the watershed. And it takes a lot of work and uh, I think the sunrise is doing an outstanding job.
Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, I I will echo that too. I, years ago, I served on the on the sunrise and uh, and Leon was, Leon was there then. So it's uh. It it's it's great that we have uh, citizens that get so involved and stay involved. So thank, thanks again, Leon. Any other questions for Leon tonight on on the sunrise? Tim, are you going to talk about Rum River, Upper Rum?
Yeah, I can do that, yeah. Um. You know, we've got the accomplishments for twenty twenty and for twenty twenty one. Um. We're in a, we're going to be in that one watershed now plan. What that is, is we're, there's more grant money. For some of these projects, you know, it's going to be like sixteen, seventeen cities and that. So, you know, each city will put out what project they want to work on. And the big ones right now are Rum River, Lake George. And then um, I guess I just found out this last week that Crooked Brook and Cedar Creek are both in paranormal. So that, those are things that we're going to be looking into in the next uh. This rest of this year and next year. But uh, like I said, if if anybody wants to go to the meeting, I I think the next one's in May. It's at Oak Grove City Hall. And I'm sure get you uh, an agenda and a time and you're more than welcome to come.
Okay, any questions for Tim regarding Upper Rum? All right. Thank you both, Leon and Tim. On to item four, our work meeting agenda.
Our monthly work meeting is scheduled for April the fifth, two thousand twenty one at seven P M. Items recommended for council discussion review could include, but may not be limited to the following. Number one is the American Rescue Plan. That's the discussion of the next round of stimulus monies and funding for cities. That will be received. Uh, we'll have something about grant amounts that East Beth- Bethel will be eligible for. And projects that they could actually pursue. It'll be different than the first round from the CARES funds. I think these funds will be more general in nature and cover a wider range of areas. Uh, which in our case will be very beneficial and may even relate to one of the projects that we're currently working on. The other item is the personnel policy manual review. Uh, Mrs. Bannick with Edward Glamour is working on that and should be finished with it. Hopefully maybe by the end of the week and we will have that for presentation and review with council. The other item is the two hundred and twenty ninth and Highway sixty five. It's a zoning issue with B and T trucking. Uh, about addition and we would like to get some review by council on this to get some direction on how to proceed with it. Uh, I would also like to talk about opening city hall for public facing business again. And while we're at it, I would actually like to begin that sooner than the work meeting. Because we do have appointments that come to city hall. They do come in. Uh, we have some issues with people at the door. If the receptionist is off doing copies and stuff, sometimes they have to wait there a little bit longer or they start calling other staff members. We consider that an appointment, so we do let them in so they can talk with appropriate staff people. Primarily people in the building department, things with that are starting to increase in activity. So I would recommend if we want to wait till the work meeting, that's fine. But I would like to recommend that just as a policy matter, we actually open up city hall to public facing business. Hopefully as soon as Wednesday. We checked around with all of our adjoining cities and they're all open for public facing business with the exception of St. Francis.
Uh, Jack, do you need any, do you need any approval from council to do that or?
I, I would, I would like the approval.
Uh, do we need that in motion or?
That, that would be best, yes.
Okay, um, I guess I would make a motion to open up city hall for public facing businesses based on the city mayor's administrator's discretion as to when.
All second. Tim's second discussion. So Jack, I think you mentioned Wednesday? You think you want? So.
Well, we, we can get the word out tomorrow and we'll start posting on the website, Facebook, Nextdoor, Reader Board, so people will, will know. And it's going to avoid a lot of confusion at the front door. When you come in now, you come into the foyer, there's a sign up there that directs people to call for appointments for whom they want to see. And most people are like me, they come in and you try to open the door and even though the sign's there, you don't see it. So I think it'll help us out a lot, especially with the receptionist. She can concentrate on a lot more activities that she needs to focus on rather than getting up and opening the door every 30 minutes or so.
Okay.
So Jack, is that going to, is that mean all the staff will be back or are you going to keep going the way you are with staff?
No, we'll keep going with the work at home assignments the way they are. We have everything covered for the most part, except maybe for one day in community development, once, one short there. We did talk about some staffing requirements as to attempt for Erin's position while she's out on maternity leave. But it was a consensus of that department that would take more to train a person. We'd spend more time with that and get any value from it. So they've got the work divisions divided up, which I think in a very efficient manner so far it's working. We'll monitor that though as time goes on.
Okay, any, any other discussion? Okay, to the motion. Tom, can you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundel.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And that motion passes. Uh, so back to your proposed agenda. Now you can take one thing off.
That's correct. So we would propose those other three items. Uh, if there's anything council wants to add or thinks needs to be on there, bring it up now or just let me know in the next week.
You actually have a fourth item you didn't talk about.
Uh, oh, the rain garden at 19255 East Front Boulevard. I think after we got this on there, we got some additional information that clarifies some stuff. Uh, there's still maybe a request for part of this to be in the public right of way. I think it's best just to work with Jamie on this unless city council wants a presentation on it. We can certainly do that. That's not an issue or a problem. So why don't just add that on there? We'll just kind of give a report and update on it and council can decide. Anything about any conditions or anything you'd like to see if it involves any portion of it in the public right of way.
Do, do you know if any have commenced design or made any designs yet?
I don't think it has been, and that's what they're wanting to see where they're going to be able to work in. So I think this will be kind of a determinant to see what the final design will be of the structure.
Okay. The, the, the property that's listed here is actually my next door neighbor to the south. And in between us is a culvert pipe and that's what the rain gardens protecting or designed to protect. So that pipe goes straight into the lake. Okay. Is there a motion on the proposed agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the items discussed for the work meeting, the April work meeting.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none. Uh, Tom, can you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundel.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And that motion passes. Onto staff reports.
I'd just like to remind everyone, we want to get the word out early that on April the 26th will be our annual local board assessment and equalization meeting. So that people that have concerns about the valuation of their property tax can appeal this to city council. If you do have a concern about your valuation, we would first recommend that you take this directly to the city assessor. In most cases, that can be resolved at that stage. If it's not resolved to your satisfaction, you can appeal that assessment to the council at this date. Uh, the important thing to remember is this is the only date that that appeal can be made. Once that's done, these valuations go into the county and there's no further opportunity to do anything about them until the following year. So I just want to make this known at this meeting and we will keep advertising that. So if anyone has any questions or concerns, they can call city hall. We can get the information they need in the process to contact the assessor. Or in the case where there's no resolution, how to proceed to file for an appeal in a meeting with city hall, assuming that we're still with virtual meetings at that time.
You know, as Jack said, this, this is the time to address the change in your valuation of your property. I would say almost every year, um, when we have the truth of taxation hearing at the end of the year, folks are more concerned about the change in your valuation because that changes your tax as well. Your valuation goes up, you pay more tax. So, um, so it's kind of a, a, a two-step process, so to speak. Um, when these notices come out, I think in the next couple of weeks, the notices will be out on evaluations of your properties, you know, take notice, you know. Um, that's the time to challenge, uh, if there's a, um, abrupt change in your valuation. That's the time to, to, to act on that now. And as Jack said, that the, our property assessor is the one to talk to first. So it, it's real important so that people understand that.
I've got one other thing, Steve.
Yes.
In February, staff, council authorized staff to take bids on the stage used for the East Bethel royalty coronation pageant. The stage is 16 sections, 16 four by eight sections constructed of a two before frame with five eighths inch OSB board on top of it, covered with a piece of outdoor carpet. One of the things that the OSB board is attached to the frame by construction adhesive. So disassembling that and salvaging it makes it very difficult. We did take bids, we advertised for those. We got one bid. The bid was for $1. Uh, and I'm just seeking direction from council to see if we want to try to rebid that. In my opinion, I don't think we'd get much more. And we're, we're going to get greater value out of getting that out of our coal storage building to give us more space to put equipment in.
Is there any objection to us accepting the bid that we received? Think you have direction, Jack?
Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. So on the council reports, Brian.
At EDA meeting, March 15th, Julie Lux, the EDA president, was part of the ACRED interview process. And she gave a report, this is for the replacement of Jack O'Hager, O'Hager's position as she resigned effective of March 1st. March 8th, they had the first round of interviews, had 12 individuals. March 11th was the second round, which Julie participated in. They had three finalists that they interviewed. And they were hoping by the week, sometime during the week of the 3/15, March 15th, that an offer would be given to a selected individual by Anoka County Board. We had discussion about, uh, doing a request for proposals for putting together internet service plan. Uh, we discussed the 2022 EDA levy. And that was approved for a 1, $136,200 budget to be recommended. And that will go, that's next up to the finance committee to discuss. Um, and that is all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. Tim?
Um, I got two things here. Uh, the fire department this morning had search and rescue, uh, virtual. And then I'd like to let everybody know that April 8th, the chambers tentatively setting their sunrise breakfast, 7:30 at Route 65. And that's all I've got.
Yeah. Suzanne?
Okay, I have a couple of things. Um, first I attended a Anoka County Blaine Airport, um, meeting with two other people actually down at the airport. And we talked about the vision, what they have. I learned a lot of what they do have, what they need, how to capitalize on what they have, how to get more business in there. We talked about, um, communication, how to communicate with communities. Because if you have ever been on Nextdoor, the community Facebook pages, you've seen people saying, oh, what's up with that airplane flying so low? Is that a stunt plane? Is that a plane going to crash? That kind of thing. And I know a lot of people don't even know there's a website that they could go to. I didn't know. So, um, communication with communities is something that we're going to be working on. Tours of the facility, community involvement, fundraiser kind of things, just things to get the community involved. Because they want to expand it a little bit business-wise, but the commute, they want the community to understand that it's not going to be detrimental to them. So it was a really good meeting. I was there for maybe an hour and a half and I really enjoyed it. Um, but now I want to bring up some issues. So first I want to talk about the road commit, ask about the road committee. I'm wondering if that has gone anywhere. It started, we haven't voted on anything, I know that, but I'm, I'm just curious because there is no more road commission. And I'm thinking that, um, the people who were on the road commission should get some kind of recognition. So I'm just wondering what you have to say about that, Jack?
Uh, actually, we did vote on the road commission. It was decommissioned.
That I know.
Back last fall, as far as the recognition goes, I think that's a very good point. And we can certainly make that request to council to acknowledge their service and generally what we do with those outgoing commissioners on the expiration of their terms is they've been given plats for their service.
But where is the committee stand? The, the replacement?
There is no replacement for that. The, oh, the road committee itself. We haven't had any, haven't had any need to meet on that yet. Everything's been individual and that committee meets on an as needed basis.
Okay. All right. The other thing, there's two more things I want, I'm going to try to ask for and see if it's possible. I'm wondering if when we get issues coming from the planning commission to vote on, can we get copies in our packet of the minutes that pertain to what we're voting on? Because I think if I would have had those minutes from the November 9th meeting, some of this wouldn't have been a surprise to me. I, I would have been aware of it then because I didn't go back and I didn't watch the planning commission meeting before that vote. I, I just knew there was, it was a 5-1-1 vote and I didn't understand and know what was, what the issues were during that meeting. So I'm wondering if that's possible. The other thing I'm wondering is if we could start getting a monthly report of all the issues that residents bring to the city and the status of them. Because as council, we're, we're, we're the ones who are being, get held responsible for the issues that the people bring to the city and whether it gets resolved or not, we're responsible. And we don't even know what's going on in a lot of the cases. Like the girl that was here earlier, it's been going on for a year, she said. If we had known about it, we could be asking for follow-ups and stuff like that. So I'm wondering if a monthly or bimonthly report from somebody in the city with just a chart of, okay, you don't even have to put names, but just put the issue and resolve, not resolve, working on, in court, whatever, that kind of thing. You know, the ordinance violations, the complaints from people in the city, that kind of thing.
Uh, to answer your first question, yes, it would not be any difficulty at all to include the planning commission minutes in your packet. They can also be viewed online on the website, but we can certainly put them in your packet too. As far as the report, uh, we can do what council directs.
Well, does anybody else have a problem with that?
Uh, Jack, how much, how much effort would that be?
I don't think it would be a whole lot of extra effort, Steve, if everybody keeps a log on what their complaints are with their with calls and emails they receive. So it'd just be a matter of logging them in as they come in. It would, it wouldn't be a lot of extra effort.
I think it's a good idea. That way we can see what's going on. And then, you know, like if someone goes to Suzanne and then they come to me. So two of us aren't trying to help the same person at the same time or I, it just, I think it'd be nice to have some sort of uh, organization on that.
Tracking.
Suzanne, are you, are you including compliance complaints as well or?
Well, sure, if they're, if, if they're disagreeing with it, if they're fighting it, yes.
Okay.
If they agree, you know, if they have 20 cars in their yard that they're working on and they say, yeah, you're right. I'm, you know, I'll, I'll take care of it. Then it's not a problem. But they're like, hey, this is my property. It's my right. Well, I think we should maybe know about it.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Do you want, Suzanne, do you want to give direction to staff? I think Jack's looking for a motion on that.
Oh, I need to make a motion? Oh, all right. Well, I'd make a motion to, um, have the city bring council a monthly or bimonthly report regarding, um, residents complaints, issues, compliance issues.
Good for you, sir. Motion made second, discussion.
Jack, don't you already do that, that compliance thing once a year?
Not really. We generally have some discussions like at a work meeting we had when back in January, we identified major issues we had with code compliance.
Okay.
Reviewed those and got direction on those matters. Uh, those were major ones that were really outstanding and needed direct attention. For the smaller ones, we haven't done those, no.
Yeah, because I know that the city does keep a list for code compliances. And it numbers into more than just what was presented, because I've seen before in the past. So those are already being reported.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, to the motion, Tom, can you take roll call vote please?
Uh, councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. Suzanne, did you have anything else today? Okay, Shelley?
Mine is gonna be easy, um, the park uh, committee, we did meet. Um, just talking about how great it is that spring, things are starting to pick back up again. Um, the only thing that I have to report, um, and actually I'm just more bragging than anything. Uh, Jack and I went out on March sixteenth and uh, he showed me uh, all the parks. In East Bethel and a lot of the trail system uh, that he could get me to. We had an absolute great time, um, I learned a lot uh, on our adventure and. Um, I look forward to learning more and uh. Being, I'm, I'm proud to be a part of the park committee and I thank you, Jack, for uh, showing me all those, all those parks, it was, it was great to see them in person.
My pleasure.
Good, that's it? Okay, um, question I have, uh, has there been any more discussion about booster days? I thought there was gonna be like a decision made fairly soon.
Uh, I had mentioned this to Carrie and I think Carrie had contacted Stephanie Dorn. I don't think we've heard anything back from her yet. Uh, I'll double check on that tomorrow and inform everybody by an email. If there's been any change in the status from Stephanie's report to council back in January.
Okay, so I assume there hasn't been any booster community meetings on, so.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, question I have for staff is. Uh, our, our neighborhood's gotten a couple of city notices uh, recently. Um, the, the public notices, uh, the latest one is a side yard setback in our neighborhood. Um, when these notices go out, generally it's just a letter that lists an address and kind of briefly talks what the issue is. But it, it's, the letters are more technical than they are informative. And I think many times if there's just a simple um, drawing or map or an explanation that's included with the notice. I think it's more informative to, to those neighbors that uh, get those notices. Um, in, in, 'cause a lot of times it's just an address and they don't understand whether they should be at the meeting or not. Uh, we kinda had that issue with the, with the zoning around the lake. So, so for something that Ja- that Jack and staff can add into these notices, I, I know it's not required legally. But I think to be more useful and more beneficial to everyone is to have a little more explanation uh, in those notices to the neighbors, so. Yeah, and the fact that they know, know I have the answers, so I got three neighbors asking me what the letter was all about, so. Uh, I think, I think it'll actually answer things a lot sooner.
We, we'll review those and try to correct that issue.
Okay, I, I think just being more informative, having that in the mindset, I think it would be helpful, so. Um, and then the last thing that I just wanna comment on is, is this kind of ordeal we're going through with, with approval to final plat for Whispering Aspen. It's, it's been unfortunate, I think, for a number of reasons. Um, one, obviously, it's, it's costing uh, our residents thousands of dollars in terms of attorney's fees and staff time. And uh, appears that we're not done. Um, and it, you know, and, and perhaps the, the, the biggest frustration with this is for. The longest time, uh, our city has been, and its leaders and staff have been criticized for not being business friendly. And I've always just kinda dismissed that, y- y- you know, you take it in as information, but. I think we know what the, particularly in the last eight, ten years, the city's done in terms of E D A and in support of our. Chamber of Commerce and, and, and supporting of, of, of all our existing businesses and the, and the business retention program we had. Uh, I think the city's done a lot to support our businesses, but um, this is the first time uh, in the years I've been involved with our city that, that. I've actually seen a, a city council act on something that certainly wasn't business friendly and, and that. That's incredibly disappointing, so um, hopefully, hopefully this will get fixed, hopefully we won't have these issues in the future. And I know uh, Sunrise Business Meeting, I'll be emphasizing the fact that our city does support our businesses. And we are business friendly despite of what, what, what's going on right now, so. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made in second, um, Tom, can you take roll call vote please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Before I vote, I wanna say thanks, Tom, for filling in for Chris, and I vote aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Yes, thank you, Tom, aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
And Mayor Voss.
Aye, and Tom, you can, you can be with us anytime, so, with that, our motion passes.
You guys will have Chris back soon.
Our motion passes, our meeting is adjourned, uh, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.